Ask him if he was. Come in person, and if so, he wanted me to bring a snack. Okay, so we need just one more. Is Jerry coming back?
She will be coming back.
Did you see her coming back?
She will be.
Usually the chickens don't fly. Something about being here.
We, I don't have any officially.
We have till the 20th. It needs to be on the 20th. Well, while we've got a minute, do you want me to come down? See what the 21st is and come down then.
Yeah.
Have I got the date wrong?
Actually, 20th is a Saturday, that'd be a Sunday.
23rd? 23rd?
So it is just a bit past 5:30, we can start our regular meeting. Today we do have a guest here, and I have explained to my guest that we would put her first on the agenda. Everyone, this is Margaret Story. Margaret is a member of the League of Women Voters and our liaison for the Republic Libraries election every year. And we haven't done this in a while, but we're gonna go over, Margaret's just gonna review the processes during the election.
I will admit, I thought it was at 7, so which is very lucky. And here. And I went back and I was trying to find it, and of course I couldn't find it in my haste. So I just asked Paul, vote to accept this as a legislative district, special legislative district library, came, and our first vote to accept that was in 2008. We were not involved in that, the League Women Votes. The first vote, I believe, was only at downtown. Am I right on that?
It was when?
Only at downtown. It wasn't up here too? Doesn't matter.
I think, I think so.
So.
It wasn't in the general election?
Yeah, it was part of the, it was the general presidential election.
That was 2008. And then in 2009. But, so we were asked if we would provide a structure and workers to conduct the vote for the library. And the library has paid us a stipend, which is a hell of a lot better than making stuff for a big sale. So the generous contribution of $500. And we provide two people here and two people in the library, in downtown, in the main library, and me for the day of the vote. And we vote on the budget, we vote on trustees. We are very specific with our workers that they are not there to conduct library business. They know nothing about library business. They know how to fill out ballot, how to enter them in the computer. Their job is, that is their job, not getting involved in library business. One of the things besides having a special budget to vote on, that what is in the district library function, that the trustees are elected rather than appointed. And for years, they have been, years and years, they have been appointed, which caused some differences, I guess. And that first, that 2010 year was, I expect shotguns to come out before the day was over, but they didn't. Your husband sat here in this branch all day, didn't he? Never left. And so it, we had all sorts of shenanigans going on. Fortunately, we eased those out, I think. So we, Mary Muller was extremely helpful in helping to set up guidelines, which we use now. Now, Mary, Mary is a librarian, Mary was on the library board. We've shopped this around, and we also do East Green Bush using just about the same, same format. So Mary was a big, big asset. And I think one of the things that, that is important to me, and I learned from Mary, is that what the role of the trustees is, it's minimal to none at the day of election. It's common vote and scamper right out. It's, you can put, and, and I think this year it's particularly important because you're asking for a well-deserved but significant increase in budget. And we don't want people to get irritated by a board member saying to them, please vote for the budget, please vote for me. It's not appropriate. And I know, over the years, we've had people on the board who've also been League members. Marie has been one of those. That's a little iffy. Marie, last year, worked to shift in East Green Bush. Fine job. Dead. East Green Bush is a different, different, different climate. Different climate, but most people come in and they so much want more for their library and they'll pay it. Of course, that's the way they've always been treated there. You want, you want it, you pay for it. So it's a very different experience. So anyway, I think Mary Muller's guidance 10-plus years ago was, common vote, go home. Paul posts the election results immediately, right?
Yeah, they're supposed to do that as soon as their calendar is done.
I think your role right now is, because you know, we have a poor, poor attendance at the budget hearing and meet the candidates. Of course, we need some candidates, but is to be talking up the need for the increase in the budget. Now's the time to talk to your neighbors, to talk to other groups you belong to. That it's, and I get, okay, do it, do it now, and then the day of the vote, come in and vote and leave. And you have to remember, we have to put those signs up that you can't be doing electioneering or saying to somebody, oh, you gotta vote for me, please vote for me. It's not acceptable. And we can't, particularly when you're looking for a significant increase in funding. You don't want to take the chance of who's gonna hear you saying something like that and make a major, major fuss that could put us in more trouble than we already are. Do you have any questions? Marie?
So how did things go last year? I know in the past there have been some computer difficulties. Were there last year? Always will be.
Which we keep working on, and I think they're better. We've got better computers, for one thing. And Paul and I were talking the other day that here, well, we'll do it both places, but there's a set of directions, and apparently the directions got misplaced in their trip from downtown to here, that Paul will have the one here pasted to the desk. And then, because it was well into the morning before afternoon, before they found what they wanted needed to do, and they had a lot of trouble, so. And then sometimes it just doesn't work right. But we and I think it's 100%, not 100%, but we see 80% better than it was several years ago. Anybody else?
What's the mechanism? Is it, so is manually counted or not?
No. We no, the computer is used, we don't record the votes on the computer. We have a voter list for the city of Troy loaded. We get it from Board of Elections, and it's loaded in the computer. And we check people in if we match them with their address, what they say their address is. And here, well, we have it in downtown too, but here, people could live in Scatico or maybe right there on the line, but they use this library. And they are sure they should be able to vote. We have even more of that in, in East Green Bush. So, well, you've experienced that much. And so it's just something that, that's how we use the computer. We, when the polls close, the two people who are working here pack everything up, not the computers, but the ballots and the stuff. And they come downtown. In the meantime, we've started counting down there, and then we count separately, Lansingburg and Maine, because some board members. Well, I can stand here and I can look out there and I can tell who's gonna vote, just tell they're walking in. I know. But I also vote here, so, because it's easier. The, the board likes to pass, in the past, liked to know how many votes Lansingburg gets and how many at Maine, and then we add them together for a final count. But there's no way we can say, oh, Lansingburg doesn't need any money because they didn't vote. You know, we, there's no way, because a lot of us vote here rather than in downtown. Is that the answer you wanted?
The votes are counted, yeah?
Yes. Are you ready? S.T.O.R.Y.
As in story.
Anything else? Before the actual election day, when we're talking up the budget, how far can we go in eliciting that yes vote? Can we say, we hope you vote yes? Do we have to say this is one and let, and then drop, drop it?
I think that's your decision. Personally, I get irritated if somebody asks me to vote for a person or for a particular thing, but that's me. I guess I would rather have. There are people I'm sure don't even know we have a budget or that we have a vote, vote. I mean, I think you have to step back and think, how much do people know? I talked to a woman the other day who has to be 60. She's never been in Troy Public Library.
Not at all?
Never, ever, ever.
Right.
So, you know, we're not, those of us who are involved are interested, find out, blah, blah, blah. I, I think you can ask, but I wouldn't do it right out. Personally, I wouldn't. I don't think there's anything against it, certainly. With, but think about by the time in September, how sick people are gonna be about electioneering. So use your best judgment. Anything else? Okay, we'll see when September. Not that far away. And if you think of something, they know how to, Paul knows how to reach me here. So it's very. Marie knows. Adele knows. Carol knows.
Thank you so much for coming and doing this.
Hope it was helpful.
It's been a long time since we had, say, Mary going through those. I think it's helpful. There, are you with the intent? It's at Lansingburg.
Thanks, Margaret. I'll see you on the 23rd. Yeah.
So back to the rest of our agenda. Is there any public comment? Ten doesn't seem to be so. Carolyn, will you?
At the Finance Committee, we voted to recommend that the board approve payment of our bills at the amount of $44,671.43. And I'm making that recommendation that we approve that. All those in favor?
So our consent agenda. I knew that the minutes. I know there is a Building Committee agenda in there, but I did not see the report. She said it, he descended, that looked, okay. Admin? I did not see one in there. There is no, you may kill us, and there is a president. I guess, yes, these are pulling together. So for our consent agenda, does someone make a motion to approve it? Okay, please? We have a second? All in favor? So because we hold the approval of the minutes, shall we do that now? See, it was a contradiction in the first item. And it should state who voted how? And should the next also? Well, I know I was the only one who voted against. I know one of the extensions in A was Kirsten. And I voted no for that. Also, I was, I got confused by, I've seen both the 27th and the 17th for the Gilded Age filming.
Where the heck are we on this agenda?
The minutes were polled, and so we're going to review the issues with the minutes. So we get that out of the way. I think it was the 27th and now it's the 17th. It's changed. Wait, so the snapshot is correct. Second? All approved? Any days? Extensions? Jerry? Okay, thanks. All right. It passes. Okay, all right. So we did our election review, then two video conferencing guidelines. This is hopefully the last step and will process, we have to go through to allow member video conferencing. So there is a draft. The draft is based on the model of, and I apologize to the Committee on Open Government for calling them COG when they're really supposed to be called COO, but it's based on their model. Everything pretty much taken from the legislation. But it is something we need to review and approve. So. Enough to any comments, questions? Where you are? The guidelines for video com, member video conferencing? I say it's procedures, not guidelines. I've been pointing at it.
You gotta get numbers on these pages so that we can say on page such and such.
Do you mean the individual sheets, Jerry, or just so you know where it is located? Like one and two, page two, or are you talking?
You might have to section in the, you know, an alphabet, no, Eric.
Or maybe you say.
Given a section number or something, so the big.
Do you want for the rectors?
We'll see what can do to make it efficient in the tribe. Stat crazy. We get these things in. So back, back to the actual procedures. Do we have any questions or comments or? That was definitely corrected. They corrected it on their website, I looked later, and when they did their workshop in July on it, and they had their, what are they called? PowerPoints. It was correction. So I think it said, I don't know, thinking, call those eagle eyes, not mine, in saying it, seeing that word. But that doesn't mean that there isn't another word here someplace. Number nine. Yeah, YPLs or TPLs? Okay. It's a big deal, but if it's gonna be official, it will be official, so we will fix that. That was me. Need to organize a station, you did at least one to make sure people were looking and reading. That's not why I did this. Do we, do we have a second? Any other discussion, questions, anything? Okay, all in favor? Excellent, thank you. Next is our fiscal policy. Do you want to go through some of the changes?
Sure. I had a couple of changes that I think we should probably make. On page two, where it talks about budget development. Where it talks about budget development. I have basically thought it would be a good idea, if it read a little bit differently. The proposed budget will be submitted to the board by their July meeting for their consideration. The final approval and subsequent presentation to the public would be in the August meeting.
And do we chat against this?
For age two, policy budget development.
It just discussed, it has an opportunity, the board will discuss in the July meeting, review, I mean, they can certainly prove it at that point, but. Final approval would be the deadline of the August meeting.
And that's what's in our bios.
Yeah, that's true. On page three, the check signing procedure is considerably different than when this policy was written. Um, so it's a read that, um, the, um, you know, two signatures are required on all checks. And, um, board approval is needed on all the checks, on all the expenses, anyway. Um, so that would sort of change the wording in this procedure. Um. So, you know, I, I don't think you need to talk about 10,000 or 25,000 or whatever. Um, because if board approves all of them. And this is also before we had. Two signatures on the checks.
The way you're saying we don't need to.
So it'll just say dispersment checks will require the signature of the director as well as a president or treasurer of the board? No amount given, right?
Right, so you don't, I don't think you need an amount, I think you just need to say. That all checks are, have two signatures and all checks are approved by the board at the board meeting.
Where's the business manager that is out?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we need.
People that aren't there.
So if we, would you want to say all dispersion checks?
All, all dispersion checks. Correct. Instead of just dispersion.
Yeah, I think, um.
I'm not looking at the same page that you're looking at. Research. So, okay, right here. All dispersion checks. Or dispersion checks in the end all. Any questions?
Um, then I, I was suggesting on page five, four.
Go back to responsibilities. See what?
Just the responsibilities for this, on page three.
Yeah, it's fine, I just want to address, I didn't really address it, this manager will ensure that two signatures appear on all dispersion checks. And we can cross out the 25,000 on that one too.
Correct.
On page five, a small change I thought we should have. Page five, number four should probably include the auditor. This is the section on. Uh, fraud.
Okay, is it an auditor, contractor?
Well, the, the auditor has to send, he, he sends out a questionnaire. And he also sends out a questionnaire to some staff members, asking whether they had any evidence of fraud, or have seen anything, you know, uh, that would constitute fraud. So basically, the auditors are concerned with this particular issue.
So where would they, where would you put them on the?
Just add.
People, they would report to, not people to be reported to.
The library director, the board of presidents.
Okay, so is that where the auditor or?
For its auditor.
Okay, oh, so board attorney, comma, auditor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the other thing I had was on the last page, the credit card limit. And I'm suggesting that be changed to 5,000.
Sixteen.
Are you going to ask the credit card company to lower your limit to 5,000?
I'm going to tell the card, the bank that our limit is 5,000. And they need to comply with this regulation.
So with the 5,000, 55,000, that's.
I get 55,000. So it's 5,000.
I mean, I don't care if it's 50, but I'm just saying.
It's fine.
It might be easier to just mark where it is. It might be easier dealing with them. Some of the issues I've had when I am a previous board with adjusting limits, it was just easier to.
I think, uh, oddly enough, credit card statement. In my personal account. It's linked to my personal account. So apparently, I'm liable for.
I, I think we should still change the budget review.
What's that?
On page three or two, I think we should change this budget review.
Okay.
Because to reflect that we actually look at it every month, page two.
All right, oh, page six.
Rather than saying that we're just gonna look at it in June, and then make changes for the end of the year.
This one, so I, I, I'm not getting where.
Yes.
Oh, budget review.
Right. Since we do it every month, we might as well. Unless we're gonna.
Well, this is, this is to. I mean, good, but this is to review, you know.
Yes.
Right.
Before.
Then either we have to do it.
Approve a new budget. You know, it's sort of part of the budget season, so it's been.
Right, so either we need to actually make sure we do it, because I don't think we really did it this year.
Well, we sort of combined that with. A review of the whole budget. The whole new one. And on last meeting.
Right. I, I think would be appropriate to get a couple ones in there noting, the board reviews a budget each, each month. The board in preparation for the succeeding year's budget preparation does this, 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 undate such.
What are you saying?
Just, just saying that although we do this in June, we also do, we also review it every month.
The board should view the budget every month, the board in June. Should do a annual review of the preceding year's budget in preparation for the next year's budget.
Right.
But my, my, I mean, basically, we do do that. Everybody.
Now we just got a red dent.
We review line by line and say, oh, what's wrong with this line here?
We're just articulating it in this now.
Yeah.
We're just putting it in. Formalizing.
Right. Yeah.
Say it again.
Preparation.
The board shall review the budget each month. In June, the board shall review the previous year's budget. As part of its preparation to set the upcoming year's budget.
I agree with that, I think in our current.
It should say finance committee rather than. Oh, right, right. Thank you.
Okay, so finance.
And current year budget.
When we use that in budget.
I don't know if we need to do a motion for that, because I think the suggestion has been wait, to wait till next month. But we can certainly just review it. Um, I don't think we need to motion to do, that's my personal opinion. Exactly, exactly, we'll incorporate these suggestions and the other suggestions that come up in the next. Between like next three, three and five weeks, so we can get it to Paul, we can incorporate them, and then we can look at the. Um, revised finance policy. Yes.
I just have, I just have a couple of questions.
Please.
So when you get to the investment page?
Yes.
Page seven. It says, the management responsibility for the library's investment program is hereby delegated to the treasurer.
I know.
Well, I have no idea really what our investment is, or what our policies are.
Well, we, we can.
We just have a.
We can set up a meeting, I mean, we sort of covered this before, we have an investment account.
Right, and that's it.
The partial purpose of, there's several purposes of the investment account. One purpose is to park money, so we don't have more than 250,000 in the credit operating accounts. But the other is that the investment account is invested. And it, and it has, it is totally collateralized. Okay, we get a statement every month about how much the collateral is, it's like billions. But it also is operated in such a way that it complies with the OCSA regulations for government entities. So it would be the same kind of account that the city would use, or the same kind of account that perhaps the school district would use. Because. You know, it implies, it, it complies with those investment parameters. It's possible. You know, to have somebody else manage your account, but again, it has to comply with some pretty rigid, I mean.
I just, I, I just saw that, you know, I'm responsible, and maybe you and I should have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, we're not, we can even.
A little bit better, what I'm responsible for.
We can even call our banker to it.
Okay.
To explain.
That would be wonderful.
Again, I'm not a banker, thank goodness, but. And that, you know, that's the reason for. For the investment account, basically. I mean, we can't just, you know, willy nilly buy equities or.
Correct. Right, but even like this, the treasurer should provide that we're interested with monthly reports, so basically all we look at is the bank account, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, you know, the parameters here too. Or the priorities for the money that we have, you know, number one priority is safety.
Correct.
Um, well. For a lot of investment bankers, that's not the number one priority.
And so safety of what?
Preservation of the capital, so you don't lose any of them.
Okay, because, because the other thing it says here says that we show, uh, will provide the highest possible return. Or it will maximize the security.
It means 44 dollars so far this year.
Yeah, well, but that sounds like the opposite of safety.
Right, right.
Next message is there, our policy says for the maximized. But given, given a, I agree that safety is beneficial.
Preservation of capital. Preservation of capital is the foremost objective of the investment program.
And then we got a contradiction in item number one of the page on the general. Well, it does say should generate the highest available return without sacrificing the first two objectives, which is preservation and liquidity. So I think they're. That's why we're not, also, we're not just voting on this today. That's not why we're, that's why we're not voting on this today.
Should this be compared against, uh, what's stated in law for our special library? That's special district library.
Is it?
Should it, should, should we be looking at this in conjunction with what the law says? As far as the action of the bylaws? Or is this?
Yeah, well, this has been looked at from what the law says. This is basically what the law says.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this A, B, C, and D is what the law says.
Yeah, it's just a.
Word for word.
It's not your writing.
No. I didn't make this up.
Yeah.
Now, again, like investments, if you were an investment banker, C would be number one. That would be where A is. Anyway.
Oh, I, I'm disturbed that the credit card is in your name, that doesn't sound like it should be.
They insist on doing it, it's just like a business credit card. Your business credit card would be in the owner's name. And in his personal account, because he's liable for it.
But you're not the owner.
Well.
Is it, is it more, it doesn't just identify who the individual is with the organization?
Hmm?
It, it isn't just identifying the individual within the organization that has.
No, they want a person.
Right, the individual.
Yeah.
Who, for, to whom the card is issued.
That's me.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying.
My name is on the card.
That, right, as is appropriate, um, because then it's associated with an individual. But that doesn't necessarily make it linked to your other accounts, does it?
Yeah, we've argued this with the bank over the years. They, that's their procedure.
Right, but what if you didn't have other accounts? I, I'm presuming. I'm presuming you have accounts at KeyBank?
Yeah.
But what if you didn't have accounts at KeyBank?
Well, then it would still be in your name and you're responsible. If, that would be a new account.
Whereas, well, I share it for the fire company shows of my in the fire department.
Yeah.
So. Right, that's what I'm saying.
One thing we may have to look at is why are we doing business with Key to be honest?
Any business, you, you, well, you know, if you have a credit card as a business, it's gonna be linked to an individual.
I think your question about it being linked to your personal accounts as well, it was a question about whether there should be. A way to create a great separation between the two.
Since I. It's kind of a moot point, because if it wasn't linked, I mean. It would still be linked to me, I'd still be responsible for it.
That, that's not a question.
As the director of this program, not as you as individual.
No, I'm, I'm personally responsible. No, I'm, I'm personally responsible for.
I see that. I don't understand. I don't understand why the library.
I don't know. I've been in business before and that's exactly how it works.
But I, I think you said you have your personal banking at that same bank.
Yeah, if I took it out, I'd still, I'd still be responsible and they still would, that would be the account, would be the credit card. But it's not mixed in. It's not.
The way you separate it.
It's not.
The way you separate it would be put this library's accounts into a different bank.
It's not mixed into my account. It's a separate account here. Okay, it's not, the money is not mixed.
You say something is linked, so I guess the question.
It's just that when he logs in, it's.
Yeah.
Here's all, here's his checking, here's his savings, here's his personal credit card and here's the business credit card he can.
Yeah, all of the.
The question is that if someone needed to do financial investigation on this library bank account, will they then have access to all of it? If they're going into the computer, will they then access all Paul's personal accounts? I don't know the answer to that.
Probably.
And so. It's what? I'm sorry.
If they were looking at the credit card.
They might have logged in.
And we're investigating the use of the credit card, would they then have now access to your credit, well, your personal finance information? Because it's linked to your account?
I suppose.
Would you now want it?
Sure, they probably would.
And so it may be to your advantage if we look at putting the library account into a different bank. So that'll be completely separate from your personal account. But I, I, I think that's what the question was being raised was articulating. I, I have no opinion on the subject.
I mean, you raise that question, but Paul's uncomfortable. I'm like a library is comfortable. And directors. Seems like there should be other options.
And.
Easy one would be a little bit better. Honestly, easy, but.
That's what, that's why it says in Europe, I live, I have to turn in the card.
Right. Immediately.
Well, perhaps it's something to explore. Explore a different bank. Explore. You know, I, I don't think that the library has any other connection with KeyBank to this. Is this the only one? Or do we have our investment account at KeyBank?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not.
All of our accounts are with KeyBank.
Because I think we have has to be a certain kind of bank, right, so to provide the municipal service.
Yeah.
It has to be commercial. It can't be a savings bank or a credit. You understand it. But I've also been told every five to 10 years, an institution should go survey the state of the market, shall, shall we say.
Could we ask the treasurer?
Just, would you like me to explore the possibility of a credit card somewhere else?
What?
What, what were you saying that is recommended?
It's part of the state of the market for financial services. For the library.
So are we getting the best fees?
So like, maybe we could find somebody who's not charging us fees.
Maybe what?
Find somebody who doesn't charge us fees now that KeyBank is charging us fees.
Well, they can only charge us certain fees because there's rules and regulations for that. So they can't charge us as we are a business. They're charging the fees that they can charge us. They can charge any government entity.
So.
But if you would be more comfortable, we can meet with our banker.
Okay. Sounds good.
Don't let, don't listen to me.
Well, at least then you could explain to me our investments. Do I know anybody who does investments?
I think so. Are they volunteering or should, do we need a motion?
Oh, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
He saved the motions for that.
Okay, I think it's exhausted for now. Okay. Um, mission statement. We make it that same question. Does that mean, well, is it in?
That I didn't say.
Oh, we're not, there's, this is going to be a discussion, not a, oh, read this.
Again, we don't have.
Yeah, we've been talking around this for a very long time about the mission, mission statement. We did our last redo in 2019. We didn't really discuss mission statement. I know each of us has come to the library with our own perspective, our own opinion of what a library is or should be, um, why we're kind of here. But we've talked about something, and I don't like the word pithy because it seems to be almost derogatory. But comments on, on what we could use as our mission statement. And as Carolyn has said, that might be a very good place to start. Other discussions that we need to have about where this library is going. So as it is a quieter month, I thought this might be a really good time to kind of go around and see what people thought about what our mission is. It's not like we're ever really going to be able to go on a retreat and, you know, sit down with a glass of wine and a lot of cheese, but this is our next best thing. Do you want to start her? I did, I know you put things in the Dropbox. I know you send things out.
I've, now, you know. I mean, I think it's easier to work for something that we, we decided, I mean, we have, we have like two or three mission statements and for me, that's a big problem. And I also think it's something that we definitely need to nail down and it should be on everything, including our website and all of our brochures and things. I think it's important that we get it out there once we decide what it is.
That depends how long it hits.
Well, it shouldn't be that long. I mean, there's the difference between a mission statement.
The, the same, a mission statement should be short enough that we can remember to tell people.
Right. To do like an.
It has to be pretty short for me.
Right.
I can't, I can't remember our current mission statement.
No.
No, it's too long.
It goes on and on.
And I, I, I saw one that I thought was really nice when we were, were talking about this a while back and it was very short. It was something like information, uh, knowledge and community that I can remember. In fact, look, I just remembered it. Right, it's from, how many years ago? I have, I have another saying to share with you and that's that libraries offer information and librarians are the guides to knowledge.
Librarians are guides to knowledge?
So it's, it's not part, necessarily part of the, the mission, mission statement that I just mentioned, but it's a way to look at it, why you would have both information and knowledge.
And I think, I mean, in addition to the information, I think you have to include entertainment in there. I mean, that is part of the library. Goal is to provide entertainment for people as well. You know, I mean, we give them DVDs, we give them fiction, we give them, you know, I don't think. In downplay.
I just think in terms of providing library services and we can spell that out later.
Yeah, but you're kind of, I think you have to define, I think library service is too broad. And what, what is that? What, what library service to you is going to be something totally different than library service to me. I think you gotta kind of give it something. It can't be too broad either, you know, just by trying to make it short. I don't think it's too broad. Then it's like, what does that even mean? You might.
And engage the community and programs.
The, usually the most common things you see would be education, um, information and recreation.
See, but when I hear the word recreation, I think about like tennis, yeah.
And offer something along the lines of public access information. And I would include entertainment under information. Find some kind of information. And I think it's broad. I think information. Or to include entertainment.
I think too, uh, somewhere in there, we should have the fact that, you know, we strive to provide the best possible service. Maybe we could say within the parameters of the resources available. Well, I don't know, maybe not, maybe not.
I had to remember it, so. Right, it's gotta be something. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty sure. I know I looked up, but when we first started, it's some of them, but I can't remember. Of course, I can't remember anybody else's.
You didn't care about grammar. Bullet point of six words, six lines, six words per line, fits on one slide. Could also fit on the back of a business card that way. Thirty-six words.
Like, oh, many public libraries is there's. I mean, can I, am I allowed to do that? I know we're trying. Oh, yeah. Our public library is an essential resource promoting community lifelong learning and quality services in a safe, welcoming space. Six things.
That actually starts getting weird for me.
It's the People's University.
There you go.
Continuing education after you finish your, your more formal education allows you to continue.
A little worse in parallel as part of your formal education.
Yeah. Pretty much everybody says the same thing. Educates, informs, inspires. Providing free and open access to materials and information.
Do we want to task ourselves with looking at various mission statements and coming back with suggestions as to what we think is is good?
Yeah, there's a lot available on the internet. Almost every library.
Yeah, and systems. Systems, have it too. Otherwise, so tended towards educate, engage, empower, but trying to figure out how to say it without. Again, when you say educate, it sounds to me either paternalistic, paternalistic and saying, well, we'll educate you. So I've been working on how do you do that to say we provide education to engage our community and empower, empower our community.
Equal access, I think, is.
I think lifelong learning has better connotations than education.
Correct. The New York Public Library has.
Yeah. Is that New York?
Oh, I was conferring with Paul, but the New York Public Library has environmental lifelong learning, advanced knowledge and strength in our communities.
Oh, so good.
That looks either one you looked up. No, I think, I think I've got it from a local.
Keep it simple.
Cause that, you know, in the world that, you know, I might actually send. Two, three words.
Would be different.
That fits on the back of a business card. That's all, only one, one to two lines on the bottom of brochure.
Yeah. And as I'm saying, you should actually have it displayed in your meetings.
Deborah Hudson, the backup, we have our day text. On the back is our mission statement. So everyone else can see our names, but we are looking at our mission statement every single meeting.
That's a great idea.
It is. And it fits. Our placards are a little bit bigger than this, plus you. But it does fit there. So, yeah, that's something we should have every single time. And then the idea is also review whatever's still up and just remind ourselves. Some people start with the, you know, meetings with the prayer. We're supposed to look at everything about our mission, but, um, but it's something that we can, can do with.
Goodbye.
Is a better phrase. But we've talked about talking about it for so long that it's kind of time for us to really say this is, this is what we're all about. And what we do, what we do as a library. Okay, so let's see, next month, if we can, everyone has a chance to look at some mission statements, come up with something that means something to them. And then we can come up with just the right tone. And if we cut pace and play it right, that's what we'll do. Are we creating the wheel? Is it always? You know. Do we already have the dates for the, whatever the meetings, what meetings are? Did you give those to me? Cause I don't know.
Can I take it you mean the media candidates and.
Right.
But. Yes. It's the same day as our board meeting for the Tuesday at Maine, which is, I always have to look. Otherwise I will lie. EPL Board, um, the 13th, September 13th.
Okay.
For Maine.
And so it would be at.
At Maine, 7:00 PM.
And so.
7:00 PM. I have the art gallery from 6:30 on and the 15th for here at 7:00 PM also. And the lead, lead will be, so a moderator, moderator will be here from the lead. And Paul will do the justification piece. And as many of us that can make it to the meetings, even if we're the only ones here. It just happened. Um, if anyone can make it, that's a good thing. It just shows some solidarity. September 20th, 12 to 8, both locations, both branch locations. Maine's not a branch. September 20th, Tuesday for the vote.
And who's up for reelection? Is there any competition?
I know Christian implied in his own way that he was interested and would. Marie, last time we spoke, you had made your decision yet? And, and, yeah, I haven't, uh, got anything more about it.
The 25 signatures are due on the 20th of August.
So is it material for that somewhere?
What's that?
Is it, is it material available somewhere for that?
I, I can send you, yeah, I mean, I can send that to you.
So that's 15 days.
Yeah. It's not, it's not that hard. I mean, it's only 25 signatures.
Right, but it.
Is it advertised to the public or?
On our website, it was in the newspaper, down the Facebook page. It's been out there in public.
So again, it's a deadline for that because we have to get a ballot made and we have, you know, go through the whole absentee ballot thing.
This, this story will be certifying signatures as she does each year. I'm trying to think what else. So, okay. So we're getting our September agenda all set. So we'll have a whole hour to work on this. An hour and a half at the most.
I may not be here for the 13th.
Oh, no. So you will not be at the board meetings, what you're saying?
Probably not, cause I'm leaving the next day for California.
Holy, please. Holy, nice.
My mind will be.
Safe trip.
My body isn't, but my body will be getting ready to go.
Okay. Well, if you have anything else to add about the two things that we're talking about, like the fight fiscal policy and the mission statement, just send it, you know, to every, how about you send it to everybody? So everyone can see it. Fair enough. Okay. Paul, do you want to do a director's report?
I certainly can. I have uh beginning the twenty twenty-three operating budget narrative that I put together with some help and suggestions. This is something that uh we would put on the website and in various social medias, outlets and also um send out as a press release. So this is basically plus I've sent this to staff members, so everybody knows that we're on the same page. Um, the Gildan age. They say now that they wanted to fill on the seventeenth, uh, which is coming up pretty quick. Uh, but I don't have a discussion, I don't have an agreement with them and I don't have a description of what they want to do. Uh, nor do I know how disruptive this is going to be and when they're going to start to prepare. It's not quite as smooth as it was last year. I will say that. Representative Paul Taco is scheduled to come to the main library on the twenty-sixth at ten A M. He requested this visit uh because he was unable to attend our hundred and twenty-first anniversary because he was stuck in Washington. So he said, well, I'd like to come. And so we set up a, a meeting on the twenty-sixth. We do have one program going on at that, on that date, at that time. Sort of part of the summer reading program, we set up a program on reptiles. I think it might be a good idea if we had a delegation. Maybe a bus. And I could even call maybe the mayor's office. See if they could come up with some people.
Well, then don't forget to invite Carmella.
And, and, and counsel of course. But yeah, I mean, I'm really, hopefully some board members can make it so we can put up a pretty good show here.
Will somebody send something out?
Yeah, I'll send it out. I'll send it out. Building conditions, I know we are working on getting those improved, but this month, well, it's been kind of rough weather wise. Um, we had to close, we had to close early six times so far. Uh, luckily the weather is supposed to break by tomorrow, so we have every confidence that we'll get through the, maybe the rest of the month. I've applied or I will be applying, sending in the twenty twenty-three construction grant. And so what I've included in the construction grant is replacing all the EPDM roofing material on six sections of the roof at the main library. The estimate I have is for a hundred ninety-eight thousand. But we're applying under the new ninety-ten um regulations, so our portion would be just nineteen thousand eight hundred. And we're hoping it goes through that way. As I understand it, this is probably our best opportunity for the ninety-ten coming up. Staff again is sort of uh the story of changes. Stephanie Dudek, who has been the head of adult services, has left. She's been with the library since two thousand and seventeen. She's done a really great job for us, particularly with programming. So she will be definitely missed. And she's taken a job with Albany Public Library. We're also losing some more library assistants. Charlotte Macaster, who was here at the Landing Bird Branch, has resigned. And also Anushka Argawal is, has resigned. He said he has been at the main library as a library assistant.
Have we implemented the exit interviews? No, we haven't. No, we haven't devised. I think we however need to acknowledge that Stephanie and Charlotte and Anushka have resigned. I think the board needs to acknowledge the fact that there have been three resignations.
Okay.
You don't have to prove it, we just have to acknowledge it. Or just find prints on it.
I, I don't know whether I should wait till later, but I came across something that talks to the question of, of how the board, what the board's action is in the appointment of staff. It was written by the trustees organization. And I've asked that it be placed in the administration folder for the Dropbox. I've always had the question of not really understanding what's occurring and I thought it might be useful to everybody. So I just wanted to let you know that since we're talking to staff and across this and everything, that I did happen to find that and wanted to share it.
Is it any different than the fact that we acknowledge, no, that we approve the hiring of the individuals?
It essentially says that we also are responsible for all the other aspects of it too, but that we delegate that to the director.
When you say the other aspects?
Well, recruitment, the decision as to who should be hired.
What about uh if someone is hired or is, or someone retired or someone goes elsewhere, is there board action required for this?
Uh, and so it wasn't discussed in the, in the material that I found.
I will definitely look in review, but it is truly my understanding and also having gone through the trustee handbook material that though that part is operations.
I, you know, I'm just saying that obviously this is a question that is arisen, not just with us and the trustee organization had written a response regarding it. So please take a look at it.
Oh, definitely. But I think our, as far as, again, what I understand is our responsibility for hiring. It's a fiscal responsibility, so we approve the hiring. Of course, in our particular circumstance, it's kind of a moot point because there's social service hires to begin with, which changes kind of our role, but that we approve the hiring as a way of acknowledging that there is a change in the fiscal responsibility of the library. But the hiring, recruitment, et cetera, is operations and that's in the hands of the director. And whatever other staff he has included in that process.
I'm just recording that I came across something that.
We could do trustee training again.
Well, you know, there's a virtual version and I was thinking, well, we, we all did it. But I'll send that out. I just didn't. But also, you know, even if it's not part of the core training, it's part of the trustee handbook pieces.
It's part of the core training.
Well, it's even besides that, they, they only do that a little bit, but the rest, there's whole things under the Nichols and um Smith-Waldbridge programs. But anything else? Oh, so we, do we acknowledge that we have heard that we have lost three more staff members? Acknowledged. Excellent. Oh, this is new business. Anybody else? Any older new business?
Not sure. We're doing service. I apologize for being late. Was there action taken on the consent agenda? I assume there was.
Yes.
Was the building report a part of the consent agenda? Was it accepted as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
I, I took a look at it, included in the packet here and I apologize that it included the agenda for the meeting of our last meeting, not the minutes for for permission. I'd like to update that for five minutes on the last meeting. For consideration in the next meeting if that's appropriate.
Well, someone sent it out already.
I did.
Yeah, that's what I wrote it on based off of your.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. So what I sent was.
When I, when I cast my vote.
But that was, that was not this piece of paper?
Not the agenda, but your actual report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that was a question that came up because I was saying it's on the agenda, but not. And it was, it was clarified that there was one in so no other, oh, the new business. Community feedback. I, I do have ones and a small one. So instructors coming to do a young people's program with materials and call the either directions or like where, if she was, or he was quite of, I'm trying to find the right word. Basically said, what? No parking lot. So I passed that. There were, I think that's fair, that's right. That there was no parking lot. I wrote that down in my notes. Okay. Anybody else? Public comments?
Um, I'd like to say something if I may.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks.
So uh, Virginia, yes. Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the board's support for the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. I specifically wanted to thank Marie for reaching out and getting the resolutions and proclamations done. Carolyn, um, not just through the library bus, but for the extensive work that she did with me on the archives display up in the reading room. Keith for getting right in there, you know, rolling up the sleeves and helping the staff with all the grunt work, both before and after. And Evelyn for the advocacy and support that she did with that as well. So thank you on behalf of myself and the staff.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you. I was thinking about that with the, all that work that we did that and then put it up in that hot room and nobody really got to see it. I was wondering like maybe we could like put those out somewhere, like maybe one board, some place.
Well.
You know, maybe rotate them or something.
We are making a slideshow to post as a thank you with the photos and um we're including the boards in that. I also have them digitally that Joy provided me and I'm willing to share those with anybody that wants them.
Okay.
They were really well done, but it was just so hot that you really couldn't focus on them. Yeah, so it'd be great if we could have that semi-permanent display somewhere.
Even if we put one, like just one, like put the easel up at the top of the stairs and put a different one on there every month for a while or something.
Something simple enough.
I don't think you're gonna get the same. You can't really see them as well in a digital format as you do when they're on the big posters.
Correct. And um, you know, I will, we've been thinking about that. I'm not sure how we will do it, but I will find a way at some point. So I will work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll find a way.
Yes.
Yes. That would be fun. Um, any other public comments? I think not. Okay. In that case, um, date and time of next meeting is September thirteenth. It will be back at Maine. Five o'clock for finance, five-thirty for the regular meeting. Um, and again, at seven P M, we will segue upstairs for the public hearing. Budget justification, meet the candidates, they, whatever.
Yes, several upstairs.
And is there gonna be pizza in between?
We're hoping.
Just for the people who haven't impressed them previously.
No, I think everybody could have some.
Cause what?
We've all been here where we've done pizza.
Like a pizza and then at least.
Yeah, we do pizza. So that part has, has to be worked on. It will be there. I think if that is a, if not a request, then certainly a um vote it or comment in yes to pizza.
Well, it just seems some kind of food. For people to be able to plan whether they're going to get.
So in this case, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, we got seconds and thirds. All in favor?
Excellent. Do we give you back our thing?
You know what? I will take them because unless you really know you're gonna bring them back.